Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. It is Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. The Board has been in closed session since 5:45 for items listed on the agenda. In accordance with Section 7E of the Illinois Open Meeting Act, the Board President and the Superintendent have determined that in-person attendance by the public at the meeting is not practical, prudent, or feasible due to COVID-19 considerations, including great difficulty in maintaining appropriate social distancing in the meeting room and the nearby spaces, given the number of persons who are likely to attend and seek to engage in public participation. Public viewing and participation will be by electronic means in the link provided in the Board Agenda, and Board members will be physically present at the meeting unless permitted to participate by electronic means in accordance with Board Policy 2220. All right. We have seven Board members present, and at this time we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So typically, we do recognitions before we get into the business of the meeting. And so tonight, we're going to move up the Croy Railway Group presentation, which is a bit of a recognition. It is a presentation done by some of our York High School students, and then after that, we will follow the regular agenda. So at this time, I think Mr. Grenz is going to...
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time and for being here tonight. The York High School Business Incubator Program is excited to continue again this year after its first inaugural year. We have a fun celebration this evening. We're going to hear from Barry, Connor, and Chris, who are also not just innovative and incredibly entrepreneurial, but they're also very photogenic. You may recognize them from a recent Daily Herald article, and they were given some recognition, which is why we're going to talk about them tonight for some of their work with the Croy Railway Group. So I'm going to hand them over to you. Chris, Barry, can you guys hear us okay? Connor?
Yes, hello. I'm Barry Cardo with the Croy Group.
I'm Connor Palmsky.
And I'm Chris Markison, and along with my team members, we're Croy Railway Group. Our group started about one year ago. We've had major success thanks to the business incubator class. Our problem we identified was that in many cases, railroad crossings are blocked by trains, and you don't know whether to wait for the train out or go to the underpass. Our solution to this problem is to track the speed and length of trains and turn that information into how long a train will be blocking a crossing. We will send this info to first responders and help save lives by reducing response times to emergencies. We also plan to send this info out to the public to reduce their commute time. And now I'll pass it off to my partner Connor.
All right. So throughout the different entrepreneurial lessons in this class, including learning about competitive analysis, unique value proposition, business model canvas, financial models, minimum viable product, these lessons enabled us to make real-world applications and connections for our idea. In November of last year, during one of our weekly in-class meetings with Mr. Donlinger, we dove into the logistics and funding we would need to complete our project. As we discussed, a potential opportunity arose to seek federal funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation. Over that weekend, our team looked through grants that go for potential funding opportunities. We found one called "The State and Local Government Data Analysis Tools to Support Policy and Decision-Making for Roadway Safety." However, since we were a student organization seeking federal funding, we would need the help of the City of Elmhurst. We reached out to City Manager Grabowski in early December about coming in for a meeting about the possibility of the Croy Group applying for a grant with the city. Mr. Grabowski was very supportive of the idea and agreed to be the eligible entity applying for us. However, we had a quick turnaround time, and the grant had to be submitted by January 17th, so we had a lot of work to do in a very small amount of time, and Mr. Hatterline accommodated accordingly for that. He allowed us to work on our application during class time as long as we had our classroom completed also. In gathering data for this application, we connected with Superior Ambulance in Elmhurst to talk with them about our idea. Mr. Tillman and Mr. Faber at Superior were very helpful in providing emergency response times for ambulances and talking through logistics of our idea and how it would work for a system like theirs. In addition to support from Mr. Hatterline, City Manager Grabowski, Mr. Tillman, and Mr. Faber, we also had overwhelming support in developing our grant from leaders in our community, including John Ciforio, Ben Harbor, and Jackie Murdock from CDM Smith, York High School Resource Officers Officer Waldenmeyer and Officer Jorgensen, Deputy Police Chief McLean, Scott Levin, Claire O'Shea, Bill Lyman, and Brian Sheeler. Even with support from the Elmhurst community, we truly would not be where we are today without Mr. Donlinger. I think one of the big keys to success in the incubator program at York is mentorship. Our mentor, Mr. Donlinger, provided guidance throughout this whole project, which allowed for collaboration with the outside world. We are very grateful that he's a part of our team, and now Barry will take it away with our current project and next steps.
Thank you, Connor. The current project of the Croy Railway Group is to provide first responders and commuters with accurate information on train blockage times at grade crossings, with the eventual goal of reducing first responder response times and improving quality of transportation for commuters in the community. Listed in the slide or some of the next slide are some of these steps we plan to take. First step would be collaborating with other York groups. Part of our current project involves computer expertise. In addition to the outside experts in the field that we have connections with, we plan extensive engineering backgrounds to create proof-of-concept simulation. We also plan to build additional relationships with experts in different fields that would help us accomplish this goal. Should be product testing with organizational partners. Superior Ambulance has been an organizational partner of the Croy Railway Group for a little over a year. We've worked closely with Mike Tillman at Superior Ambulance, who supplied us with about a year's worth of ambulance response time data that helped us in the past. We hope they'll be able to do something similar while incorporating our new technologies to give us an idea of how our technology has helped improve first responder response times in the community. After we've finished the proof-of-concept model, after we've finished the testing with organizational partners, and after we've finished further development with experts in these fields, we hope to do real-world solution deployment. This would look like a full-scale local build with the hopes of rapidly scaling up with the help and support of our partners in the Federal Railroad Administration, the U.S. Department of Transportation, and local government partners. Finally, I would like to thank everyone on the Board of Education. I'd like to thank our mentor, Jim Donlinger, and everyone who has helped us this far, as we would not be where we are right now without the support of everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us speak.
We appreciate hearing how a new program like the incubator is really playing out, and I know you've worked really hard, and it's really neat to see how this will benefit the community in the future. So good luck and keep us posted. We'd love to have you come back and tell us how it goes. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, too.
Can I just add? We are seeking additional mentors, so if you are tuned in at home and you would like to be involved, please go to the York website, search "incubator," it will pop up. You can email any one of us. We really do appreciate it. We need the community support, and the community's been very, very helpful, as they pointed out, so thank you very much.
Thank you to the high school administration that supported that, too. Okay. Next, we will follow the agenda in order, which is public comments. So for up to an hour, submissions received before 7:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting will be read aloud or summarized after stating the name of the author. Comments received before 7:00 p.m., which are not read aloud or summarized, and those received after 7:00 p.m. will be reviewed by Board members. All submissions received will be made available publicly on the district's website. There is a link in the agenda for the comment. At this time, Mrs. Troutman will read the comments that have been submitted.
First comment, Diane and John Brisk. Can someone explain this section to me in regards to remote-only? Remote-only students will remain in the virtual remote learning environment Monday through Friday. This adjustment will also include an adjustment to the hours of synchronous, real-time, live instruction for students learning remotely, with real-time, live instruction likely closer to 2.5 hours per day versus additional time. Some of this adjustment to time spent directly with teachers is due to the role of the teachers working independently in the classroom with students, while the remote-only students will also be working independently at home. My question, as I am reading this, will my child, who is remote-only, not be receiving the same learning time because the students that are in the classroom will be getting specialized time with the teacher? Am I understanding this passage correctly? Next comment, Rebecca Hirsch. It's clear, after listening to the last few Board meetings, that there is a huge divide and disconnect between administration, Board members, and teachers. Teachers volunteered to be on the reopening D-205 committees, hoping to discuss and put together plans for remote, hybrid, and in-person learning. Most discussions, however, surrounded in-person and hybrid logistics, leaving teachers nervous about a future that didn't focus on specific health-related scenarios. Without answers to the "hows," teachers became uneasy, frustrated, and frightened about the reality of in-person learning in any capacity. Teachers and support staff had to make important decisions about how they were going to proceed. Given the infectious nature of this virus, many decisions came from the need to protect individual health and family members with compromised systems. Doctors' notes leave requests and basic questions were met with resistance from our administration and stakeholders. In fact, the most alarming and insulting comments came from our very own school board members. Teachers were being portrayed as the enemy instead of partners in complicated decisions. At the last school board meeting, PPE was discussed. Teachers across the district were confused, as most had only received a small portion of what was presented. In fact, some district principals stated that they were not getting some of the supplies presented that night. Further, some of the supplies, particularly the masks, were ineffective and a waste of good money. It seemed like the district was throwing darts at the wall, hoping something would stick. Conversations with teachers who know the most about classroom and child operations might have been beneficial before ordering ensued. Then there's the issue of technology. At the last meeting, Dr. Moyer said the district's provider was responsible for the outages and would be fixed by the next day, by 5:00 p.m. Welp, it wasn't. And depending on where a classroom is in a building, no matter who the provider is, connection is questionable. Teachers are now buying their own monitors and hookups to provide an excellent hybrid experience for students, buying their own. Teachers continue to ask for tech pieces, but requests fall on deaf ears. To spite what was relayed at that meeting, transparency about this issue is questionable. Teachers genuinely wish you would reach out, ask them what they need, ask them what is working and what is not, ask why they are frustrated and afraid, ask them they have your answers. Why hasn't anybody stopped to ask the people who are on the front lines what could be done to improve the situation? I'm not talking about scheduling with a principal to talk to handpicked employees. I'm talking about walking through buildings and asking randomly, or even better, join a PLC. As you move forward with this meeting, here are a few questions to ponder. With the internet being what it is, how will the systems handle not only teachers being on Zoom all day, but trying to teach their remote students while teaching in person, but the percentage of students that will need internet coverage as well? What exactly does teaching A and B groups simultaneously look like? Are any privacy issues being violated? How will students charge their devices at school? Will there be enough extra chargers to accommodate the inevitable lost or forgotten ones? If a teacher is out isolating or in quarantine but is still able to teach, who is watching the kids in her class? If she's unable to teach her remote class, who does that? What do those plans look like? On any day, based on the symptoms guidelines, you could have many teachers out at once. Can the district accommodate that need? What is happening to the teachers that were granted remote, but their students will be in person? How are Reach, EL, and Tier 2 students being taught remotely? Where will they sit? Where will the students sit while this is happening and not disrupt other classmates and vice versa? Will the outdoor classrooms be... I'm sorry. I just clicked in a bad spot. Sorry about that. Will the outdoor classrooms be set up and ready by the 14th? What happens when the tent plans, with the tent plans when the weather is inclement ventilation in old buildings is questionable on a good day? Have you investigated this for yourselves? Take the wipe challenge, wipe any surface in one of the elementary buildings, you'll be shocked. Who is checking to make sure that every staff member has self-certified? Teachers who have innocently forgotten have slipped through the cracks. Were you aware of that? Is the self-certification app even ready? What if a principal lets some safety guidelines slip through the cracks? Should teachers report measures that violate guidelines? If teachers do report violations, will they be reprimanded or retaliated against? You can be assured that some are already bending the rules to fit their school's need. The game of semantics isn't appreciated. Have hybrid class numbers been looked at so classrooms can social distance? Some teachers seem to have higher numbers of in-person learning than others. Will this be adjusted so everyone is adhering to guidelines and there's equity among teachers in classrooms? In the spirit of equity, why do the middle school and high school teachers follow an intervention schedule when the elementary teachers have a full day of teaching? Dr. Moyer recently stated COVID-19 does not discriminate against age. Our young people are contracting the virus at a growing rate. After driving around Elmhurst, it's abundantly clear that kids and adults alike are struggling with the rules. How are you ensuring that those same people don't disregard the regulations put in place for school safety? Should a second layer of protection be considered? Are outdoor classrooms up and ready? Have plans been made for colder or clement weather? Teachers have a lot of questions. Let them ask and validate their concerns. Frankly, their questions should be your questions, too, and remember, sometimes plans and logistics look better in print than reality. If you asked around, you would most likely see a gross lack of implementation. In the end, all teachers understand the need for in-person learning. Their jobs would be a lot easier if students were right in front of them, but that's not the reality of our current situation. Safety needs to be at the forefront of every decision, not just given word surface and reassurances under false pretenses. Once you truly start to tap into your greatest resource, the teachers, you will start to see cohesiveness around the district and community. I look forward to hearing about positive change with renewed relationships. Next comment, Emma Smith. We need to find a way to get our students back into the classroom. At the same time, district leadership has made this difficult because of how they handle their negotiations with the union. First, the district leadership announced the students would be returning to class before having a plan to do it safely. This allowed teachers' union to spend the last few months publicly demanding the District 205 follow all applicable labor laws and safety rules while administrators are continuing to hem and haw. Second, district leadership got caught lying to the public about the status of negotiations. Then management started blocking parents and community members on social media who were critical. This allowed the teachers' union to position itself as the only credible source for information. Finally, district management has created inflexible rules about how and when students will be learning. This has allowed teachers to convincingly argue that they are doing the best they can in a system where they have no real influence or disdecision-making. Let's get the kids back to school, but let's do it right. Next comment, Tara Rannier. I am writing because I just received word that football and lacrosse contact days are on hold indefinitely. I always try to see both sides of an issue and understand them, but this one has left me feeling like our kids were just punched in the gut. Every time they let themselves start to get excited that they have, that they get to have practices and add purpose to their free time, it gets pulled out from under their feet. What is the current holdup on the contact days this time? The IHSA has stated that we can have 20 contact days between September 7th and October 31st. The coaches have stated in their emails, when they thought these were a go, that it is a voluntary to participate and a waiver must be signed. The parents know the risks of COVID-19, so if we choose to send our sons to a practice, we understand the risks. That is a risk we, as parents, are balancing, and we should be allowed to make that decision. To not even have the option to do the 20 contact days that those in the rest of the state are doing just does not make sense to me. We are at a point where the mental health of our kids needs to be considered as strongly as the physical health, because a lot of our kids need sports to keep them sane and on a good path forward, especially in the world we are living in today. When a student has a sports practice to attend, chances are they will make smarter choices in their free time outside of practices, because there is such a positive peer pressure to do so. When they constantly feel like things are being taken from them that they see others doing all around us, even in our own hometown, as in the case with IC starting contact days Tuesday, like others in the state will be, they start to feel like, who cares? And they might start to lose their purpose and engagement behaviors that would not, that they would not if they had practices to attend. Please do whatever you can to make the contact days happen. It seems to me that with it being voluntary, with waivers, and all the safety measures in place, let alone these practices for football and lacrosse happen outside, that there is no logical reason these cannot be afforded to our students who wish to participate. Thank you for your time. I know these past five months have been nothing we have ever experienced, and you are being torn in so many directions. I'm asking you to fight for our kids and make sure these contact days happen, especially for those students who need sports to keep them motivated with academics and all that the York Athletic Code encompasses. Next comment, Lauren Specht. I write to you with the hopes of getting an explanation. My son plays football and lacrosse. As you can imagine, he was thrilled to start practicing and playing with his teammates again this coming week for contact days. The IHSA allowed for our children. Telling him on Thursday that they were on hold was just yet another disappointment. When he asked why, I said, "I don't know." Our kids deserve an explanation. The rumor we heard is that there are suspicions of cases in that entire team's swimming are being put on hold. Not just the suspicious cases, which ended up being negative, but the whole team. The problem is, we only hear rumors. We don't hear from the administration or athletic department. Our coaches just email with clear disappointment and apologies. I'm from Ohio, and my high school football games are televised. I watched them play live through YouTube the last two Fridays. Charlie tried to watch the first night. He couldn't stomach it. He trains six days a week right now, out of our own pocket, which we can thankfully afford. He has big dreams of playing in college. Our state is now the only state in the Midwest not playing football. My confidence that either York or the state will allow football to be played in February is slipping away. If we are canceling contact days because of a suspicion of a case, again, I can only go off rumors, then I can't imagine how you'll allow a full season, allow a full season come the middle of winter. I can't underscore enough to you what the lack of sports does to the mental health of kids in the community. What I'm also seeing is an upsetting increase in things like drinking, vaping, and pot, among other kids, with the idle time they have between e-learning Wednesdays and lack of all sports. I don't envy the position you're in. I know this must be a nightmare to manage, but the lack of clarity on decisions to halt state-approved contact days is confusing, confounding, and becoming unacceptable. Can you give us metrics or a threshold of Elmhurst cases you're watching to make your Next comment, Robin and Dan Sukamongos. Sorry. Please change the remote hybrid model to be a format where K-5 kids are in school half-days for five days a week and doing Zoom for specials only. Having teachers teach to both kids in class and remote kids at the same time is an exhausting and non-functional format. The kids most at risk are the younger ones. Our first grader has gone from loving school to daily crying and protesting remote school. She is so isolated and defeated. Her little shoulders slump each day. Her teacher tries so hard, but the most recent newsletter is full of work for parents to do because the teaching goals are not going to be reached. These kids cannot fully read or write, and teaching them over Zoom is not working. The first-grade teacher said the daily math fluency workbook is not working over Zoom, and that we parents should administer it at home. The kids barely understand how to take a picture and submit their daily exit tickets, and the MyOn reading comprehension assessment has to be administered by a parent now. This is ridiculous. My third grader is okay because he can read and write and is tech-savvy. He would rather be in school, but he is learning. We pulled our fifth grader out of Emerson, and she is at Timothy Christian. We are so grateful we can afford to send her there. And there was one spot in the school left, which she took. She is on a 504 for a learning disability in reading comprehension, and there are no written textbooks or workbooks for literacy for kids in grades 3 through 5 in D-205. It is shameful the school board did not commit to paying for a literacy curriculum with written workbooks and textbooks for the 2020 remote hybrid year. I am deeply concerned and heartsickened for our first grader. Learning will be virtually impossible for her and her peers with the current remote hybrid model. K-5 kids should be in school half-days following safety protocols and Zooming in from home only for specials. We were hopeful, but teaching math, reading, and writing over Zoom is not working. Next comment, Karen Tool. The IHSA has stated we can have 20 contact days between September 7th and October 31st for lacrosse and football. The contact days are voluntary to participate, and a waiver must be signed by the parents. Parents know the risks of COVID, so if we choose to send our sons to a practice, we understand the risk. Who made the decision to not allow the contact days? The conference, the district, York? What is the rationale? The state says it's permissible. Our student athletes are suffering from isolation, and it's safer for them to be in a controlled environment. Restricted size groups, temperature checks, and masks to prepare for the spring/winter season. Many of the student athletes are conditioning together in an unsupervised environment. Our son needs these contact days. He needs the in-person contact with his coaches and peers. He needs supervised physical activity that he's not getting from his virtual gym classes in his bedroom. Please let student athletes participate in the contact days that are permissible per the IHSA. Failure to try to start these activities is doing more mental harm than protecting them from the virus. Next comment, Anonymous. First of all, I would like to say we are very pleased with how the e-learning is going for our fourth grader at Edison. She is engaged and takes pride in doing e-learning on her own with very little help from her parents. We recognize how hard the teachers and staff have worked, and at the last minute to get this going. There are a few tech hiccups here and there, but overall, it seems to be working very well. We can all agree that this situation is not ideal for our children or their families, but we are in the midst of a global crisis and need to understand that things won't look the same for a while. To ensure the safety of our teachers and students and their families, we feel the District 205 schools should remain closed, except for IEP and other special circumstances, for at least another 30 days or until we have more data from other public schools that have reopened. There are many instances of schools, K through college, opening only to be shut down within days as COVID cases are diagnosed within the student/teacher population. We have heard stories of outdoor sports camps in the area being shut down after a few, just a few days of meeting. We are hopeful that during this meeting, we will hear about all the clear plans on how the schools can truly open safely, but when we constantly see language about safety guidelines that ends with "when possible," it doesn't inspire much confidence in the process. For now, let's give e-learning a chance. Next comment, Dante Fioka. Other for-profit primary schools have been able to figure out how to do in-person education. Why can't we? Two days a week in school, but still 100% in front of a laptop is unacceptable. It also would seem to be me to be more difficult for the teacher as opposed to less, making the overall instruction and education of our children potentially even less effective. We need to either get more creative or prioritize true in-person education using a triage-guided decision tree. Which students' grades are most negatively impacted by virtual learning? Which subjects are hardest to teach via virtual learning, et cetera? I don't want to just complain. I want to come with suggestions to hopefully find a solution that all can get behind. Could we alternate weeks by grade, e.g., first, third, fifth, and teach by grade instead of by class? Utilize the classrooms that are virtual for the week, second, fourth, together with other multipurpose rooms, gym, cafeteria, library, to comply with social distancing guidelines, and bring in additional resources, willing parent, teacher, volunteers, substitute teachers, recent education graduates, in order to support the primary grade level in charge, grade-level teachers in charge of implementing the curriculum. Next comment, Julie Arnieri. I have read months upon months of district emails and social media posts about the teachers' inability to attend school because of COVID-19 for the safety of the students and themselves. The complaints and concerns were directed through the teachers' union and their advocates. The general complaints have been that there are not enough safety measures in place for the health of the teachers. Many concerns caused countless delays and cancellations while our children's education has been postponed and limited. For that reason, when I saw the following, I was completely disheartened. Earlier this week, I drove past Jackson Elementary School on Friday, September 4th, just after 1:23 p.m., and noticed at least six to 12 teachers, shoulder to shoulder, sitting at one picnic table, with zero social distancing, no masks, and additional teachers lingering around, southeast side of the school, South Mitchell, and West Van Buren. Please refer to your own safety cameras and video footage to support my complaint. I'm sure these teachers will understand that their disregard of mandated rules is a violation of public safety, and that their own actions could be a contributing cause of exposing our students to COVID-19 in the days and weeks to come. So if the upcoming Board meeting, when the teachers' union and their advocates force their positions about not starting school on time because of health and safety concerns, please refer to my letter and their own accountability. If nothing else, have some common sense and lead by example. With that said, I'm highly disappointed that start dates have been pushed back with months to prepare. Please do not delay hybrid classes again, and remind teachers of the responsibility to protect their own health as well as those around them. Next comment, Danielle D. I am writing today as a parent who is so upset about the I am writing today as a parent who is so upset about the actions of the board. Throughout all these times, I have not seen anything but complete commitment from our teachers and taking care of our students. The board and teachers may have a difference of opinion on what that looks like, but for this board to continue to speak poorly about our teachers' commitment is unacceptable. Through emails, listening to the board meetings, and on social media, I've seen our teachers become an afterthought or made to think because they value the safety of everyone they come in contact with that somehow makes them not committed. Parents have received several emails from Dr. Moyer where he blames the teachers and their commitment to the profession as reasons we have to change our open D-205 plan. I have seen him respond to teachers on social media with uninformed, snarky comments about following ISBE guidelines and wearing masks while they teach virtually. I've seen numbers and heard of firsthand accounts of teachers who have high-risk health conditions and documented medical proof being denied any accommodations to keep them safe. This is how we keep great teachers in our district. We need to listen to our teachers and trust them to continue to do their job, even if that means continuing with remote learning. We are asking to start, we are about to start asking our teachers to teach both virtually and in person at the same time. How does that work? How can they read a book and show pictures to a group on the computer in front of them? The board seems to be pushing a reopen without a clear, well-thought-out plan on how to execute and ensure a high level of learning is taking place. Next comment, Maria Vavrinchik. Sorry. Based on students' behaviors, where they show lack of masking in the community and the school property noted by Dr. Moyer and other examples from public comments and emails you have received, it is inevitable that there are students who are positive for COVID. Many are siblings in other schools in the district. Without real-time testing among your faculty and students during these early days of school, you're allowing this asymptomatic to transmit to others. Don't equivocate, don't rationalize, don't behave ambiguously. Shut down in-person schooling. Anything else is willful negligence. Next comment, John Bischoff. We've been pleased with the e-learning program offered to our second and fourth graders at Edison so far this year. We've chosen to keep our kids in the e-learning program, at least until next semester. We would like more information on what will happen and how e-learning will be run, if and when the hybrid program starts. We hope that the level of interaction and quality of the program will not decline once the teacher's attention is split between in-person and remote platforms. Further, if conditions improve enough for full in-person learning sometime the first semester, we hope the students who have chosen full remote learning will retain the level of engagement and quality of education they've had so far. Next comment, Sarah Garcia. I have a few concerns that I'd like to discuss tonight. First is the absolutely ridiculous middle school schedule. How can you expect these children to go from 8:30 to 1:30 with absolutely no break or snack time? As an adult who teaches in another district, my students get 40 minutes for lunch. We are still done by 2:20. I understand that it may be eating at the school that is problematic, but breaks absolutely should be built into the schedule. Second, I want to take the time to address the Board of Education. We've all seen by now the way Dr. Moyer treated an esteemed teacher as well as several parents on Twitter. I don't think I need to go into why his behavior is problematic, but in case I do, he told an employee to go against IDPH and D-205 health regulations during COVID-19. He blocked several parents, not sure how he can do this since his @lifeandlifeonly account is tied to D-205. What ramifications will this have? He deleted his comments after blocking, thinking this would somehow absolve him of his behavior. I understand that everyone makes mistakes, but a real leader owns those mistakes instead of trying to sweep them under the rug. What is the board planning to do in terms of discipline? If a teacher had done this, they would have been heavily reprimanded or most likely fired immediately. What has been done to prevent his behavior from happening again in the future? I think at the very least, Dr. Moyer needs to issue a public apology to the teacher and parents involved in his tweets. Last, Elmhurst loves to say they are a premier district in this area. If this is how our district employees are treated by the superintendent, how will you continue to hire the best and brightest? It's up to the board to ensure a safe work environment for its employees and to ensure parents have an open line of communication with the superintendent. Please ensure that the actions of one will not negatively affect many in our district. Next comment, Missy Rieger. I do not understand why lacrosse practice was recently canceled. Lacrosse requires pads, helmets, and a stick. There's essentially no physical contact with the ball. Yet, a cross-country can practice running inches apart from another, and basketball is being able to play this coming season. Makes no sense. These boys need to be social and need the physical activity. With close monitoring, as set up already, this sport is easy to accommodate playing time. Next comment, Allison Nix. I'm asking that the district allow contact days for football. It's my understanding that the IHSA has allowed 20 contact days, so not sure why they have been put on hold. These boys need the one-on-one interaction with their peers and coaches. We have been told that these days are voluntary, and a waiver needs to be signed. Therefore, if parents don't feel comfortable, they can choose to not send their son. Next comment, Jennifer Fromm. Good evening. I'm a parent of a ninth grader who plays full football and lacrosse, and humbly beg you to get the permitted sports contact days back for our boys. There is a cost-benefit analysis to all decisions. The cost of having them practice does not justify the benefit of a slightly reduced risk of getting the virus. I understand the risk. It's a calculated risk that we believe is better than having his mental health decline. These athletes need to compete and work out in order for them to stay focused on school. They need to exercise, be with their peers, and be led at this impressionable age by strong coaches. The promise of these days gave us a hope, a glimmer of hope. I'd like to know who decided to extinguish our hope. The IHSA granted us 20 contact days in September and October. What happened to these days? Elmhurst and DuPage County have some of the best COVID numbers in the state. What is the justification for taking these days away? Please allow what the state of Illinois has permitted for their mental health and to give them back some of the sense of hope and normalcy. Next comment, Ginger McKay. E-learning, no sports, no drive, not a lot of friend contact. Kids need to get on the field. My son is a leader and will follow the rules. He needs to do what he does best. Please let them get in the gym and on the field. Next comment, Barb Larson. Please allow the football players at York to have contact days that are permissible by IHSA. Our son needs these contact days. He needs the in-person contact with his coaches and peers. He needs supervised physical activity that he's not getting from his virtual gym class. I understand and take full responsibility of the risks associated with COVID. Next comment, Chad Fromm. IHSA guidelines allow 20 voluntary contact days between September 7th and October 31st. A waiver must be signed by the parents who understand the risks and can make the choice whether to send their children. Why are contact days not allowed at York where other districts are allowing them per IHSA guidelines? Our students need more supervised and controlled social interaction. The social isolation of virtual schooling is not good for our students' long-term mental health. Under the IHSA guidelines, various measures need to be in place to provide the safest environment possible under these unprecedented circumstances. Please allow our student athletes to participate in contact sports per the IHSA guidelines. Next comment, Eileen Espinoza. Prior to moving to Elmhurst, I was an elected member of a local school council in Chicago, and I understand the challenges of ensuring a rigorous education for all students while balancing the safety of students, teachers, administrators, and staff. The unprecedented decision that needs to be made during COVID-19 to help our students thrive are difficult. I have extended grace to Dr. Moyer over the past few months because of the pandemic, but I can no longer remain silent. His utter lack of leadership is overwhelming, and you're ignoring it is no longer acceptable. Dr. Moyer's inability to send communications that help a community come together in the spring, throughout the summer, and into the new school year are a repeated reminder that he does not lead our district. He continues to air his grievances and personal opinions on social media. Recently, he was involved in a back-and-forth conversation on Twitter with a teacher where he made sarcastic comments regarding her wearing a mask during remote learning. He then engaged with parents on the same topic inappropriately and invoked the opinions of attorneys. A true leader of a district would stand with their teachers. If a real problem exists, he should have a one-on-one discussion with that teacher or reach out to the principal of that school to find out if the problem could be solved. Dr. Moyer didn't do either. Instead, he engaged in a petty argument via social media. He deleted his tweets. If they had been appropriate, then there would have been no need to delete them. This is intentionally divisive on the part of Dr. Moyer. I've also been disappointed by the lack of transparency and communication regarding the survey and return to learning by Dr. Moyer. The survey results did not show 85% requested hybrid learning. The actual numbers were 71 with 14% not responding. Lumping those numbers into hybrid responses is not accurate but rather misleading. Following the opt-in survey, there was an outcry from teachers regarding the safety of the evolving situation. And rather than lead his district of teachers and staff through the situation, he addressed an email to the community on August 7th stating not enough teachers are committed to report to work. The teachers are committed and dedicated to our students. Blaming the teachers publicly only highlights his inability to do his job and bring our community together when we need it the most. The BOE owns some responsibility for this as well. The most recent communication from Dr. Moyer on September 3rd mentions grades one through five hybrid and the York multi-needs classroom returning on September 14th, but remains silent on the return for high school and middle school. What is the plan? This is confusing to our parents and community. As a result, you have parents taking to social media to try and get information. Social media platforms are not the place for this type of information to be unofficially disseminated, and D-205's lack of transparency fosters misinformation. I remain invested in the best education for our students in Elmhurst as well as those students where I have lived in the past and surrounding suburban communities. I'm fortunate to follow other school districts and their superintendents' communications to their students, staff, parents, and communities where I see an effort to bring people together. That is not the same leadership being displayed by Dr. Moyer in a time when it is more important than ever to bring a community together, emphasize the importance of learning in all formats, in-person, hybrid, or remote, and remain safe by following the guidelines of the state, county, and CDC. Dr. Moyer continues to demonstrate that he isn't up to the task. He can't lead this district forward, and I have no confidence in his ability as our superintendent. Elmhurst and D-205 deserves real leadership, and Dr. Moyer has repeatedly demonstrated he does not possess the leadership skills we need. Next comment, Beth and Chris Danko. We cannot stress enough how important it is to let these kids have IHSA-approved contact days. They need this physical activity and socialization. Our children are suffering mentally, emotionally, socially, and physically due to the virus. They need to be given the chance to participate and interact with their coaches and peers. The contact days are voluntary to participate, and a waiver must be signed. Let the parents decide what is best for our children, not the district. Just 42 minutes away, full-blown football season is happening in Indiana. Forty-two minutes away. Why are our children suffering in Illinois? Many of the students are working out together and playing various sports in an unsupervised environment every single day. Why? Because they need this in their lives. They are athletes. Please provide a supervised and safe environment for them to practice what they love. Please allow these contact days to move forward, as stated by the IHSA. Next comment, Greg and Doreen Battelli. Contact sport and practices are essential to my child's well-being. Physically, interacting with coaches and peers is something you cannot create virtually. As parents, we're ready to sign any waiver necessary acknowledging this risk of COVID-19. Please give these kids the opportunity to play the sports they choose. Thank you. Next comment, Renee Palowski. I am writing to implore you to allow athletics to continue at the level at which the state of Illinois deems it's permissible. Specifically, I'm writing about football. IHSA allows for 20 contact days this fall, yet we keep getting emails from Coach Fitz. He is encountering delays in scheduling these days. His email on Friday said contact days are on hold until further notice. I am worried these players will have no contact days at all. I know he is just as frustrated by this as are the students and parents. I'm wondering why this is the case. Was this a decision by York or by District 205? I worry other neighboring high schools are going ahead with these contact days, and our York athletes are losing precious team-building and skill-building time. These athletes are already isolated due to a fully remote start to school. They deserve the chance to meet with their teammates and coaches as deemed safe by IHSA. Many of them are so committed to their sport, they are meeting up for workouts they feel necessary for their physical and mental health anyway. Providing them with the 20 contact days allowable in a structured way will provide them with a safely-controlled environment and the chance to learn from their coaches in person. At this point, we all know the risks. It feels as if we have to answer a myriad of questions and/or sign waivers every time we leave the house. If parents and athletes feel safe in participating, please give these athletes that chance and provide practices. The benefits of giving these students some sense of normalcy and enjoyment participating in the sport they love far outweigh the risks of contracting COVID-19. Next comment, Terri Brezner. We just received a communication from our children's elementary school principal regarding hybrid learning for grades one through five. The information provided is very concerning, indicating a reduction in instructional time for remote-only students. Why weren't parents provided with the full description of the hybrid plan prior to having make our selection? All students should have equal access to instruction regardless of the choice they made. At this time, it appears that the education is favoring students who are onsite, limiting instruction for those who are opting for remote. Other districts offering hybrid learning provide for synchronous access for both in-person and remote students. At minimum, students should have access to their teachers, even while working independently at home, just as those students who are onsite have access to their teachers for the full time. Thank you. Next comment, Dear Joe Wicklow. Can you please address why, if the IHSA has stated that there could be 20 contact days before October 31st for lacrosse and football, they have been canceled? Who made the decision to cancel the practices if the state says it's okay? I have two sons who play both of these sports and were extremely ready to follow all guidelines that would allow them to practice in a safe, controlled environment, and said they sit isolated from their coaches and teammates day after day, doing nothing. Not only is their physical health being affected, but more so their mental health. Please consider allowing them to practice, and if they are unable to, I'd appreciate a very clear answer as to why York is not allowing it. That's the last comment.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to reports and presentations, we, and just as an aside, the board does not respond at this time to public comment. We do address the issues usually later on. Okay, moving on, reports and presentations. We already heard the Croye Railway Group, which was a kind of a recognition. And so now we are ready for the student return to buildings, which, and I believe also is going to include an update regarding remote learning. This is probably going to be a standing agenda item as we move forward because it feels like every two weeks, things change. So that is the only thing that is constant right now, is that things are changing. And I think, just like we've all had to, you know, two weeks ago feels like a year already. So that is the thing we're going to have to really adjust to, that things are going to change. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Moyer, and I think Dr. Grins will pop in about remote learning and talk about student return to buildings.
All right, thank you. So first off, I just kind of want to review a little bit where we've been since the start of the month. On September 2nd, our self-contained special education classes at Madison returned. Our ABC class who met Hawthorne and Sandberg returned. Our multi-needs classroom at Edison returned. And our transition program, our students in our transition program also returned. Some of those students are in school for the hybrid model. Others are in school for more days per week, depending on their IEP and/or their specific learning needs. Then on Tuesday, we, today, we welcomed back our kindergarten students. And we will continue to do so all week. And we also welcome back our Madison students. We welcome back our cross-categorical self-contained classes at Emerson, Jackson, Jefferson, Bryan, Churchville, and Sandberg, our self-contained math and English classes at York, and our multi-needs classroom at Sandberg. The plan for Monday, the 14th, will be to open all of the remaining classrooms in grades one through five in our hybrid model and also the remainder of our students across the district who have IEPs and our multi-needs students at York. So there will be a communication on Thursday that will address next steps for the remaining 612 students. And one of the things that I wanted to point out is that we are looking very carefully at what is going to be possible, not only to support the programming, but also to deal with the associated staffing needs that are required for times that we can't find subs to replace people that have FMLA-ly, for example, or if we have teachers that are self-quarantining due to suspected contacts or other things of that nature. And when we bring students back to the building, there could be times that some students are being taught by a remote teacher and have to go to a centralized space. There are considerations about bringing some students back gradually so that we can ensure the proper management of the building. That could be by grade level. That could be certain grade levels where we are able to accommodate it, where we may have to delay for a period of time. Some of the other grade levels in which we're just not able to stay. Some of the other grade levels in which we're just not able to staff. So we still are working through some relatively significant staffing concerns, and we want to be able to communicate to everybody on Thursday what we believe is going to be the best way to proceed in grades six through twelve. I did want to comment specifically on one aspect of six twelve, or rather, excuse me, refer to Dr. Grenz to elaborate on some of the work that's being done on the Wednesday schedules at the buildings. There's been some concerns that have been expressed and some specific details that he's working through with the principal, so I wanted to give him a chance to address that.
Sure. Good evening again, and we are working through Wednesday schedules. We've had now two Wednesdays, and the feedback has been helpful and significant in terms of the approach. I did want to clarify publicly what the approach is and what we are trying to set out to do, as well as what next steps may take place to continuously improve the process. So currently, in grades six, eight, Wednesdays were designed to be an opportunity for students to engage different groups of students for interventions. That would be enrichment, as well as potentially tier three or other areas of need the students may have. The idea was that we would have a mandatory check-in for students in grades six, eight, in the morning to help start the day, build that routine, and then allow for all students to have their teacher available following a similar schedule as they normally would have for the first half of the period, with the second half being by invite. The idea being that as we did some more data on the students and their performance, as well as any struggles or areas of enrichment, they could be invited in for small group or other different forms of instruction to help have some space during the weekly schedule for that one-on-one time or that group time that we know the students are going to need being away from the class for the last six months. Obviously, some of the feedback has been, you know, a little more constructive than I think we initially anticipated, which is helpful. Again, that's how we're going to improve it. So we are looking at six, eight, how we can make this a little bit more structured. We have a lot of options and ways to continuously improve that. And the same thing applies for the high school. The high school had their first attempt at their Wednesday schedule last week, and that was an opportunity for them to engage some of those students with a little bit more intervention. We do want to try and intended to try to make that Wednesday piece be an opportunity for more in-person learning that could be taking place alongside a potentially remote schedule. However, again, just getting started and not having the assessment data just yet, just based on being in the school for only two, three weeks, we're still working through that. We have a meeting scheduled as quickly as tomorrow morning, just to try to revise and see, you know, what do we want to do to make this a better experience for the students? What do we want to do to make this a better experience for the staff? And how can we continuously improve that? So the feedback has been very helpful. We are listening to it. We are actively putting it into play. We just want to make sure that we don't forget about the intervention side of the work because we know that our students do need it. So I think that parents can expect some improvements on that. If not, just even clarity in the coming days, if not even sooner than that, just to make sure that we can fix where it needs to be adjusted and continuously make it a better experience.
And then another part of the report is that they have Mary Ann to be some of the primary.
Thanks. So as I think was requested and mentioned, we wanted to do some pretty frequent check-ins, and so we did a Week One survey that went out to students, staff, and parents last Friday, trying to get at just kind of first-week kinds of issues. So were people able to log in? Were they able to find their assignments? Overall, how did things go? So that's information that we wanted for that first week, and then I think moving forward, there'll be some more additional detailed kinds of things that we'll want to get at as we move along. So staff, overall, were pretty generally positive about how things went, sort of on the end of kids being able to log in and find their, you know, assignments and so on. I think the thing that, you know, seemed the hardest was starting to build those relationships with students, which certainly makes sense in an online environment. Among students and parents, the response rates were not very high. But of those folks who did respond in general, they seemed, again, to be relatively positive about sort of the, you know, can you get logged in? Are you participating in online discussions and so on? And then a little bit, kind of the overall experience was a little bit less positive. One pattern that we see, whether you're looking at students, parents, or staff members, is that we tried to match the question. So we asked students, well, how did things overall go for you during Week One? And then we asked a similar question of parents and staff. And then we also asked parents and staff to respond to the question about, well, how do you think it went for your child or for your students in the case of staff? And so one interesting pattern that we see there is that the adults seem to think, the kids think it went the best. The adults seem to think it went okay for the kids, and it's the adults that are on the lowest end of, you know, sort of, it was the hardest, I think, possibly for them to get through that first week there. So that's some of the initial data that we had. Again, you know, the surveys were very short. We didn't want to overburden people after that first week, and we're hopeful that, you know, as we move along, we'll be able to get into some of those, some of those other issues. So I'm happy to respond to any questions about the data. I think Scott is also going to talk a little bit about kind of the next steps.
So Mary Ann mentioned the need to balance survey fatigue, and we have talked at length about making sure that the data is put into play. And one of the ways in which we're doing that is the instructional coaches in the district will begin training soon with a framework that we talked about prior called the Distance Learning Playbook. They're also going to engage with the survey feedback. We used it from the spring, but we really only had two data points from the spring. We don't want to overdo it with parents. We know that it's difficult enough to be managing some of the daily routines right now. We don't want to add to that stress. But we do want to make sure that folks know that this survey is intended to improve the remote learning. It's not intended to keep us in remote learning. We want in-person, but this is a way for us to make sure that if we are in a remote scenario, that we're doing the best we can with it. Another piece of information to share is we are seeking out just anecdotal feedback as well. We have a teacher feedback forum. It's very informal with a group of staff from different, across-the-district building representatives this Friday, and it'll be a way to just sort of chat and check in with teachers and see how it's going. And the Learning and Teaching Department, as well as other departments, have also been inside the buildings, checking in on different folks and seeing how it's going and trying to work out any of the kinks there that we may have along the way.
So the DePage County Health Department issued some guidance related to the Illinois Department of Public Health's metrics and created a dashboard. You can access that on the DePage County Health Department home site. If you just scroll down a little bit to the area where the dashboard is, in the upper-left-hand corner of the dashboard is a box that says "Community Risk." And when you click on there, you'll get the guidance for schools, as well as the most recent weekly metrics for each of the categories. And right now, we're in what's called "moderate," and so moderate is a level of risk in which the county is suggesting that hybrid learning is appropriate. And so we are going to continue to push toward improving our hybrid learning as long as we're in this particular risk category, and it appears as if we will probably be in that category for some time unless we move in a bad direction and the risk is classified as substantial, in which case we would start to take a look at making adjustments. But the expectation for now is to do the best we can to provide for quality learning opportunities for students in a hybrid model. It will definitely be a lengthy period of time, I think, before we can expect that we would go back to a traditional in-person-type situation like we would like to see and like we were all used to. So initially, as teachers make some adjustments to doing that for the first time, we can't expect that to be perfect. I know our teachers are working exceptionally hard, and it's very challenging to do what they're being asked to do, so I am proud of how hard they are working. You'll see an agenda item later about trying to provide some additional resources to help support that effort. That's it for my talking points as far as this item is concerned.
Thanks. I think probably we all have a few questions, so Margaret, you want to go first?
So first, I wanted to thank you for this update, and I also want to call attention to the, to the remote learning survey results and thank you for the information provided. I think it's important that we try to operate with as complete information as possible, so we need both qualitative information, which we get from our emails and other types of information, but we also need some qualitative information, some quantitative information with the survey provides, so we can have a better understanding of, as you said, how the remote learning process is going. That does not mean that we are trying to continue the remote learning process, but while we have it, we want to maximize it as much as possible. And this is real-time information from our parents on what is happening, and we can understand what needs to move forward and what we need to change. So thank you for this information on the survey. And, you know, I know we don't want to over-survey our staff and our students and families, but I do think this is helpful for us to continue some type of process ongoing, particularly for this year, because we know it is going to be different than what we have seen in the past.
All right. Jim?
I have a comment that will eventually lead to a question, but I think I have some explanation about the low response rate from parents to the survey. And first of all, let me just say, please don't be worried about survey fatigue. I think people like to share their experiences, their thoughts, and I think people appreciate that the school district is interested in what they have to say. But I tried to participate in that survey as a parent, and after I figured out what rock I had hidden my Power School login and password, because I have Power School push stuff out to me, I don't go into it on a regular basis. So I found that and then had to reference the instructions two or three times to figure out what tab on Power School the survey was located. Couldn't manage to pull it up, then saw a comment that said that it was incompatible with some types of mobile devices, and figured that must have been the explanation for why I couldn't pull it up, and then I just abandoned my efforts. So if you can possibly make it a little more simple to access participation in that survey, I think you'd get a much higher response rate.
Chris?
Thanks. So first, just a comment, just an observation from the first two weeks, and I think one of the things I hope the district continues to focus on is alleviating the responsibility that parents have to be present with their child throughout the full school day. I know it's difficult to do that depending on the age of the kids, but there's a tremendous opportunity cost to families, particularly those maybe with both parents who are working or who have other activities that they need to be doing, who currently are monitoring school all day long instead of pursuing those activities. So to the extent that we can, and I've definitely seen efforts to try to limit it, and appreciate those efforts, but I just wanted to continue to encourage that to take place because those are services that our district, you know, should be providing in a normal world, and hopefully we can do it as best we can in the world that we're living in today. With regards to issues, I wanted to highlight kindergarten and first grade. And I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago as well. I think we have three good building blocks in place. We have parents who I think are very committed, and they're trying to help their kids through each school day, very high degree of attention required from them at those age groups. I think we have teachers, good teachers, who are trying their best to do what they can, and I think we have an admin team that's, you know, you're all planning in good faith and doing the best that you can. But despite those three building blocks, I'm concerned that our plan is not going to reach these kids for those age groups. So I just wanted to encourage us, now that we've seen the plan stood up and operate for a few days, to try to be creative and figure out how we can adjust to try to make the educational experience as best as we can for these kindergartners and first-grade kids, because I think they just struggle with the remote environment as currently comprised. So I don't have the solutions for that, but more trying to motivate you all to get together and hopefully come up with ways to improve the current system that we have. And then lastly, I guess, just the issue of Wednesdays that Scott touched on briefly. I think the feel of it is that it's just less in terms of service to students and families, would be my initial reaction to it. So I hope that as we build out those plans, and I would love to hear maybe a little bit more detail on ways that you all think you can improve it, if you don't mind commenting on that, I hope that we can leave it in a place where we don't have thousands of students just check in in the morning, and then Wednesday is free, basically, for them, which I think there's a perception that that's what Wednesdays are for many, many students as it stands right now. But any insight into, you know, how you plan to improve that, I think I would appreciate some initial comments. Thanks.
So Scott, can you share some of the initial thoughts about what we're looking at?
Sure. We are looking at, based on what happens moving forward in the short term and the long term, ways to both find other ways for that support to take place. So the initial design was out of fear that we wouldn't have the intervention time for those students. So what I think we need to do is be more creative in how we're going to do that, and making sure that then the rest of the day, like you said, doesn't feel like a free day, and that actually follows a more structured schedule that may even look similar to a regular school day on that Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. We also have been thinking and weighing in the consideration and feedback about breaks. I know that came up as well, and trying to find a way to allow for that to take place. You know, kind of having the first go with this. Now we're getting to that point where we can start to improve the process and make it even better. So I don't have, like, real specifics on that, but I will say that the idea of going back and seeing what's working Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and one of the nice things about this, you know, unfortunate crisis is that we do have some opportunities to be innovative and try to kind of play around with things on a different level. There's just that inter- this is definitely in action for us to plan and improve to the extent that we can as soon as possible.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it. And I do think that, you know, many parts of the system that we set up are off to a good start, so I wanted to mention that as well. But for me, the areas where I thought we could, just in the spirit of continuous improvement, try to attack next in terms of making them better, were our youngest learners, trying to figure out how to reach these little kids, and then also the Wednesdays. So appreciate your work on both of those topics.
Thank you.
Beth?
I had a question about Wednesdays while we're on that subject. Scott, can you just reiterate a little bit? So you talked about the middle school, and I think up to this point, they've just been checking in in the morning. And if they did have a teacher that requested them to meet, then they would do that, otherwise they didn't have to check in. So are you saying that with the first half being possibly some work with the teacher and the second half being teachers available for help, that the kids would be checking in for each class period? Or will it still just be checking in in the morning? Just for clarification.
Sure, sure. The current design is designed so that on a Friday, students would get notified as to when they would be meeting with which teachers if they're meeting. So that sort of invite piece would be based on intervention data or enrichment data once we have that data. Then the idea would be that the way the course is designed, if you split every course in half, the first half is more of a all are welcome at any time in that block of time to come and check in with the teacher. The second half is more the invite only. So you can imagine the first 30 minutes of a block for core being a synchronous available time where students drop in and out. And then the second half was designed to be more individualized for different groups of students who may have been invited in. I think the challenge we're seeing right now is just sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and executive functioning skills and having a new adjustment to remote learning. A lot of that utilization of that first half of time is just not potentially as directive enough as they may need. So we're trying to find a way to just look at what's working Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday and see where the intervention can still take place. Do we need to really change the whole Wednesday? Or can we work through a similar model as the other days of the week? So it's definitely not meeting its fullest potential right now, and I think we're totally aware of that. But it's also not doing right now what it was intended to do. So there's sort of a two-pronged problem with it not really fully getting to the point where it was designed, but also it just needing a little bit more revamp.
Thank you. I do think you're right about the level that kids are at, at that age. I think the high schools are a little more accustomed to seeking out help when they need it and knowing to, you know, get on there and ask questions and maybe utilizing that time a little bit better just because they've been doing that and, you know, have had that experience. And then the part about breaks, I appreciate that as well. I do think it would be nice, just like in a classroom environment, for everybody to be able to take a five-minute stand-up and, you know, have a breather break after just watching the kids on there for a long period of time. And they are busy and they're doing a lot, which is fantastic, and the teachers have them engaged all that time. So I really like to see that, but I could see where a little break would be great. So thanks for working on that as well. And then I just wanted to say I've had the same concerns about the younger group as Chris has, and so it was really nice to see the kindergartners going back to the buildings today and happy to know that our, the next group of kids in that age group are going to be going back as well. Because I agree that the more time we can get them in the building, the better for the younger kids especially. So thank you for all your work on that, all of you.
Karen?
There's several things that I have, one of which is I'm glad that we're looking at qualitative and quantitative data. I like the fact that not only just sending out a survey, you know, we didn't get that many responses, and we can read that two different ways. So I really like the fact that we're going to buildings. So that's a preface to kind of my question about a little bit of the process. So I'm going to make some statements about what I'm assuming is happening based on what we've done in the past, but can you make it clear so that everyone understands how we're getting the feedback and what we're doing with it? So that's the gist of my comment and question and interest. So it's around, basically, the process from what I'm gathering, from what I've heard and know kind of how we work it, is what you said is walkarounds is what I'm calling it, so that you're really going to buildings to find out what's going on. So I know that you hear from principals, I'm sure you're hearing now with assistant principals, but also from the teachers or the staff in different positions to look at it from several different perspectives, right? You're looking at it remote and you're looking at it hybrid, and you're looking at it levels, ECC, ES, MS, and HS, right? And you, Scott, indicated that you're involving the instructional coaches. So I'm going to look at it from, and you said that learning and teaching is involved. So we're going to, we're going out to all those people and we're getting, you know, that are doing this remote and hybrid, and we're getting how is it going, what ideas they have, you know, what are some issues, et cetera. And then you're working as a team to say, what can we do? And then you're, I'm going to call it, just for lack of a different way of saying it, as a pushing it out or communicating and making sure that everyone knows what those issues are, what the solutions are, at what level that they exist. Is that kind of a thumbnail about how it's working?
Yeah, yeah, that's accurate. We, right now, are doing most work around fidelity of, you know, just implementing this model and trying to, you know, make sure that it's in place and supporting staff. Visited a school, I think it was today or yesterday, and, you know, the coaches are working with the teachers to make sure things are set up and working with the students that are in person and also then remote. So there's that sort of just fidelity check to make sure things are working appropriately. And then the longer-term piece where I think the data will be most effective and beneficial will be when the coaches start to work with the distance learning playbook. And that will be a framework that allows for the coaches, using their not only instructional expertise, but their knowledge camaraderie with staff, to be able to look at the playbook and say, based on the data, based on what I'm seeing on a daily basis in my school, here is professional development that we should engage our staff with, and they can tailor it, design it. And that's really where they are their strongest. They had a huge home run on the 19th, the 20th, and the 21st with the staff. And we're really trying to do something similar that maybe is a little bit less of a lift for them to pull off for October 9th. So we have an institute day coming up and we're all kind of joining hands and trying to figure out how we can maximize that time to the best. In the meantime, though, there's a big gap of time between now and then, so they are working individually with different teachers throughout the different buildings, but we're trying to make sure that the data is applied to the framework. That way they don't feel like they're coming up with ideas from scratch.
Okay. And I'm assuming since the, a lot of the staff, or most of the staff, is in the buildings, that they're still working together with PLCs and they're able to get some just-in-time, like they need it now training.
Absolutely.
Versus waiting till some of these organized days. Okay, so people have a sense of how they can get things, you know, immediately with instructional coaches and tech support at their buildings, as well as they can go to their assistant principals and principals and their...
I've just been telling people to email RJ, so that seems to work pretty well.
The last thing, I do want to also share that I think that as much as we can, we really do have to look at those lower grades. I mean, they're not, they don't yet know how to read. I know that they are, I'm sure, are on devices, computers, that sort of stuff, but, you know, we're just expecting them to know a lot, or we're also expecting the parents to be involved to understand and guide them because they can't read yet. And so as much as we can get that environment that's best for their learning, especially kindergarten, first grade, even second grade and some third grade, because we're saying reading at grade level at third grade, right? So, you know, I just, I know we're talking about all of our students, but in particular in remote or hybrid where the students are not in class with the teacher, it's difficult in that environment.
All right. Thanks. Courtney?
I wanted to talk about the six to 12 plan to return at some point, and I'm trying to understand what factors you don't know right now that you anticipate knowing on Thursday, when you're going to communicate to the parents what their students will be doing on Monday, what's going to change between now and then, that we can't give some clear direction to our families in that six to 12 community? Because I'm frustrated about the fact that it's Tuesday and on Monday, all these kids are expecting, and parents are expecting to send their kids back to school. We didn't guarantee it, and we always said it was our target, but what are the factors that'll change between now and Thursday that will change that target date?
Well, when communication went out a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, we said that we would communicate this by Thursday, and the principals are very challenged in trying to get the students back in the buildings. And so, you know, they're working on the special ed students, they're working on the certification apps, we need to make sure that those are working properly. The additional FMLA requests come in periodically each day, so the landscape changes a little bit. So we wanted to make sure that what went out to the community was clear and thorough and that we could commit to what we told them. I can turn it over to Scott and Luke to try to explain in greater detail some of the specific issues that are in play in trying to staff and manage the buildings and ensure for the integrity of the learning as well as the safety considerations that we need to have in place for supervision and other types of issues like that, and possibly Kevin as well.
So just in relation to some staffing concerns, is that we are getting more FMLA and we still are having staff with FF-CRA requests. And everybody needs to understand that if one person in a building is going out on a leave, that is another hole that we have to fill. And we are not, we don't have the number, in a regular school year, we would have available upwards of 150 to 200 substitute teachers in our pool. Not to say that they're available each and every day, but we would have upwards of almost 200 substitutes that could potentially be available. Now, we're scaled down to only about 35 or 40 substitutes. And that does not mean that these individuals are available every day to us as well. People go into subbing because they get to pick and choose assignments, they don't want to work every day, they want to work specific grade levels or different areas. So that's been challenging. We are not seeing as many individuals apply for our open positions as in relation to a general school year outside of a global pandemic. So that has been very challenging for us. As we get applicants, because there are so few coming in, the principals are doing a great job of reaching out to HR and they are interviewing them immediately to see if these individuals are good fits to fill those holes in their buildings. So probably one of the biggest, you know, issues that we're still facing right now is that staffing challenge. It is very different in the 2021 school year as any other school year that we'll ever see moving forward. So that's just, you know, an area in staffing that's a concern.
Could you just clarify, because I don't know if everyone knows what that FF-CRA is?
Sure. The FF-CRA is the Families First Coronavirus Reform Act leave, that individuals who are impacted by COVID-19 in some form or fashion, meaning that they either have been exposed, they have COVID-19, they have a family member where they have to possibly quarantine or isolate, or if they have to care for a family member or a child who is impacted by COVID-19, or if their child's school is on remote learning due to COVID-19, they get up to, right now federally, they get up to 12 weeks of leave. And so 12 weeks of leave puts us into November, sometime in November, mid to late November, that these leaves have to be filled. And so when they're on that type of leave, any type of leave, teachers are not working. So that's why we have to fill those positions, and that's what makes it very difficult because we're obviously seeing a huge increase in those types of leaves over any other year due to COVID-19.
Just to clarify, those can be taken anytime?
It's when, it can be taken anytime, but it's, but there are specifications to it though. It's when your child's school, if a child's school is in, let's just say, there is a school that is in, you know, full in person, but then they go to remote and then there are childcare issues because those children are home, that's when that can actually go into effect for a staff member. But yes, they can. If their family is impacted by some form of COVID-19 or childcare issue due to COVID-19, they can take that at any time.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify.
Sure.
So, can I just follow up, Karen?
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to understand, so that our community understands. So it's the combination of the lack of certified teachers and the lack of certified substitutes that are driving this train on whether we can open a building.
Yes, that's a significant part of this.
Nothing on the district's part, nothing on this board's part that has been requested of us and not granted to our teachers and our buildings.
No.
Because I think there's some confusion that the district is not supplying whatever is being asked, or the board is not authorizing whatever's being asked. That's not the case.
No.
Thank you.
Karen, did you want to follow on to the...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear with the FF-CRA, Luke. It's 12 weeks of leave for a year, like, I mean, if they ask for it...
Right now, the federal government has afforded 12 weeks of this type of leave. We don't know if the federal government is going to change that moving forward, depending on, you know, COVID-19 rates, you know, throughout the nation. But right now, they're entitled up to 12 weeks of leave due to some kind of impact of COVID-19, whether it be an illness or an exposure or childcare issue due to COVID-19.
That currently expires in December, correct?
Currently expires December 31st, correct?
So does that apply to just this semester then for us? And can it be requested again in January if it's renewed? Those are the parameters I'm trying to get clarification.
Right now, it is just for this semester unless the federal government changes then.
And so when somebody asks or requests the FF-CRA, it's automatically 12 weeks or is it sometimes different?
No, no. We have some teachers who are actually doing everything in their power to make other means of childcare, and some teachers actually are only needing it intermittently, meaning that they have done a great job of trying to find childcare, maybe four days out of the week, but one day out of the week, they have to be there for their child. Some people have, they just need it truly intermittently, meaning that they pretty much have it covered, but they might have just random days due to whoever is watching their child. It could be a family member, but they're not available, you know, due to some other issue that they will need it then, but not everyone. That's a very small portion right now, but some of them are just taking it intermittently.
So are we accommodating those off-request, even though it's a small portion, right?
Yes.
Are we accommodating that teacher can teach remote that day?
Yes.
Okay.
No, 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 not if they're out on leave, no.
Well, if they're only taking one... If they're only taking one, oh, I see what you're saying.
No, when they, on the day that they need out, we, we cover that for them, whether it be internally in the, in the building or we try to secure a sub for that day. When somebody is out on FF-CRA or any type of leave, they are not teaching. Yes.
Margaret?
Yeah, so I wanted to go back and I, I'm just trying to recap exactly what we, what we have and what we're talking about. I think the return to school as we have it right now, K through five will be going back on Monday. Is that a correct statement? That's what the list is saying?
That, that's correct.
Okay, so K through five will be going back on Monday.
Kindergarten's already going back this week.
K's already back, yes. K's already back.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
One, yes. So the, all of the elementary schools will be back in session starting Monday. So what we're discussing is, and I know that was a major strain for many families because of a multitude of reasons, such as the additional time it may take parents to have to sit with their children and the children not being able to fully maybe articulate all the instructions and information that's needed. So now we're talking about the six through 12 students, how we can get them back. And my understanding is that a lot of this is driven by staffing. Can you speak to me a little bit about the difference, the challenges in the six through 12 staffing versus the K through five? And specifically, you know, certification levels and, and, and what might be required that's different for this population versus the K through five population?
Part of it is, is that our six through 12, we're dealing with larger buildings. So when you have an individual staff member who might be out, just to say a specialist, there, it's impacting more students. And so that's creating more challenges in the schedule. We're, we're also seeing a number of staff members, unfortunately, who have, were on retirement track even. Some people have actually chosen to resign their positions this year just due to the situations, you know, involving COVID. So when those situations are coming up, we have to fill those spots. And as I stated earlier, we're just not getting the number of applicants. And also, we want to make sure an applicant is a, is a quality applicant too. We just don't want to take somebody just because we might have one applicant, you know, in a position. They have to be a good fit. Also, some people are, we're seeing an increase in the FMLA medical leaves. And those again, when they're taking FMLA, FMLA medical leave, depending on the doctor's note and what that individual needs, that could run through the end of the entire school year. So again, we're posting those positions and we have to fill those too. So that, that has been some of the challenges that we're seeing as well.
And one follow-up question, just to make sure I understand. So you talked about being a good fit. So as an example, if I am a teacher and I am a certified science teacher, can I also teach English?
No, in six through 12, you have to have the appropriate single subject endorsement. Whereas K through five, it's a multi-subject endorsement. So we even look at our specialists. Some of our specialists in our district, not all of them though, they might have a dual certification, but not many of them. And that's what's been challenging because we have been trying to look and think outside the box and see if we can pull maybe a specialist and put them into a classroom. But if they don't have that single subject for K five, or I'm sorry, the multi-subject for K five or the single subject for six, 12, then they can't be in that classroom instructing.
There's, there's one other piece to this that makes it particularly difficult, which is not just the staffing, but the cohorting at six, 12. So at pre-K through five, the students are primarily stationary throughout the day. So they stay with one classroom teacher throughout the day. When you get through six, 12, they are moving throughout the building several times often throughout the day. And when you look at the Illinois Department of Public Health Guidelines that we reviewed at our last board meeting, the close contacts become much more difficult to trace, which is why you've seen a number of school districts in the area, when those, when those new definitions came out in late August, decide that they were not going to be able to do in-person instruction for a while. And so that, that cohorting piece really becomes much more important at six, 12. So we would be looking at how do we provide in-person instruction for high school students in one or two classrooms? You know, those are the sorts of things that we would have to look at in terms of staffing and those sorts of things. And to get back to Courtney's question before, the other piece of the puzzle that all of us are looking at here is, you know, we have close to 50 staff members right now, just staff members that are either quarantined or isolated due to COVID-positive exposures. So that means that they cannot come into the buildings to work with our students. Some of them may be well enough to work and they may be working remotely, but that is an additional piece that we are trying to do on a day-to-day basis. And where you have larger buildings, like York High School, for example, you're going to tend to have larger populations of staff members that are going to be exposed that way.
Thank you for those clarifications. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, thank you. Just one quick add-on to my comments earlier. And in terms of calling for revisiting our kindergarten and first grade plans, the, the baseline assumption from my comments there was that we were in our hybrid state. So I, I don't, I don't think that just returning to the hybrid model will solve the issues for those families and, and for those kids. And, you know, again, it's not a blame thing. It's, it's a plan that I helped to put together and voted for. So I was just noticing how it's going in these initial days. I think we're going to need to revisit it. And so I just wanted to, to make that clear. And one question I, I left out. At the elementary school level, I get a lot of questions from, from parents about no lunch in the hybrid schedule. And I was just hoping that you could address that and, you know, maybe comment on if there's going to be time for kids to have a snack or something during the day there. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the genesis of the lunch issue is that it was an additional health and safety factor and an additional supervision factor that we felt it was more prudent to move to a model that did not include lunch. So I, I think that we explained that at, at some point earlier on. But, but that led to the question about the snack break. We still have the tents. The principals are planning, in their return to school planning, they're planning to stagger lunch breaks for kids, or not lunch breaks, excuse me, snack breaks for kids so that they have some mask breaks and an opportunity for a nutritional snack during their time at school. So that is part, that will be part of their day.
No, okay, so I have a couple. Oh, yep, no, you go in then, oh.
Thank you for reviewing all of the challenges that you guys are facing as you're working to get kids back in the building. I think it helps for parents to understand how this all works and how one staffing situation can trickle down and affect other areas. As we are working through these issues and hoping to get our staffing where we need it to be to get our six through 12 kids back in the building, are we still considering the possibility of getting kids back in for some of our, maybe smaller groups of kids for some of our hands-on classes, labs, things like that in the interim? Is that something that we are still trying to do?
We, we'd like to. The, the challenge is just making sure that whatever we design can be changed on, on the drop of a hat. You know, speaking completely in hypotheticals, if you have 30 staff that are potentially out for whatever reason, 25 students a section, that's 750 students whose schedules are completely thrown off based on that outage. So even housing and working through remote labs for those students would require upwards of 15 staff members just to supervise those groups of 50. So anything that we're doing needs to be incredibly nimble and able to be changed almost immediately based on the, the adjustments. And with that comes a great deal of planning and frankly exhaustion. Just speaking totally candid with trying to figure out what to do and having a change over and over and making sure that we plan through every single scenario. And that, I think, is the state that we're in right now and trying to figure out how to make this work and make it change when, when it needs to.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a couple of things. First, I, Scott, I just wanted, or Dr. Grin, sorry. I just wanted to thank you for doing the, the survey. And I think that I agree with Jim that it would help if it was a little easier to like take as a parent. But I think that it would be nice if we got in the habit of, you know, that quick survey. It's almost like real-time, you know, feedback. And I think, you know, that's how, for myself as a board member, like I look at that. I see how many staff actually took that survey and what they said. I look at how many parents, how many students. And that is, you know, these decisions are going to change. I mean, the, the landscape's changing all the time, right? So I, I know we don't want to fatigue everyone and yet maybe if there's a, almost a habit and it's quick, that would help us always have real-time feedback on what we're doing. Because I think this is all new, so you try something and it's going to have to be, you know, tweaked. So thank you for doing that and working on that. A couple, I guess, just, you know, when we're talking about the six through 12, I, you know, I understand there's a lot of challenges to staffing. But I, I want to make sure that I'm not misunderstanding. Like, are we still working to get the kids back in school at six through 12? And is that, you know, I think that any of us know that this year is never going to look like it did in March, you know, on March 12th. But, you know, we talk about the needs of the young, you know, Chris talked about the needs of the youngest learners, which I agree. And I was so honestly, seeing kindergartners come out of a school today was actually very emotional, just driving by and seeing that because our kids are, some of them are back and that's awesome. And some of the special ed and, and that, you, you know, thank you to all of you and the principals and the teachers that made that happen and the custodians and the support staff. You know, it, it is all hands on deck, right? But I guess I look at these kids that are in six through 12 and, you know, they can handle running the computer, but there's other things that they need. And somehow, I don't want us to not keep trying to get them connected to each other, to their teachers, to school. And if it has to look a little different and it rolls out a little slower, I personally can live with that. But I don't, I just want to make sure that we're not, I don't know, resigning ourselves, that it's hard. And I, I don't say that critically because I know you're all sitting there. It's like a, almost an impossible, you know, puzzle. But I just, I guess that's what I want to make sure. Maybe that's more for you.
No, we, we definitely are trying diligently. I think the, the point of comparison I make is being in the kindergarten spaces this week, this morning, I'm starting to realize it was today, not yesterday, and seeing 20 students in the school, right? 20, 20, maybe 25, 30 versus 3,000. You know, these are, these are different, different educational settings. But the, I like the push and the idea of it's going to need to look differently. It's going to need to be creative. And we're absolutely trying to, trying to wring the towel as much as we can to see what that can bring. And I think the staffing points that were raised were, were really what we're working through. But absolutely still looking at how and, and the best way to do this.
Kara, I'm not really sure if it's possible for me to be more adamant with our people about how important this is to get these kids back in school safely. And I, I have said, and it, and it's, it's kind of occurred to me more recently than not, not that, not that it hasn't been weighing on me, but as I see this unfold, we cannot have kids out of school to this extent for three portions of their academic careers. So whether it's next week or a month from now or whatever the, the realistic return date is to get these kids back, they will be coming back into a hybrid model, into a situation where there are some, where COVID is not completely eradicated from the universe. And they, our people have to figure this out. And, and we are giving it everything we possibly have to try to make this happen. I, I cannot, I cannot assure you more about how, how persistent I have been to get people to understand how important it is and how necessary it is to expedite this. I'm just not sure it's very easy for us to be able to articulate all the complexities involved in trying to pull this off and all the challenges that our teachers are going to be facing in order to try to ensure that, that the learning is of, of high quality. It's, it's, it's a, it's a heavy lift. And, and I'm proud of our people for giving it the effort that we're giving it. I, I think that we are among the upper echelon of districts in terms of the commitment to getting kids back into school as quickly as possible. And I respect how hard our people are working to do that. So the point is well-taken. I just, I, I don't know how more clear I can be about how, how clear I've tried to make it to our people that this has to happen and it has to happen sooner rather than later. But we have to be able to keep people safe.
Well, and I think that's an add-on is, you know, obviously the health landscape, you know, will predict some of it. But, and I also think, you know, the community, you know, we hear a lot. We've heard a lot from our community. And I think that as a community, we've got to commit to, and I say this as a parent of teenagers, we've got to really make sure that we are taking every measure possible to try to give, you know, every step the best chance it can. So, you know, we've got special ed in, we've got early childhood, we've got kindergarten. You know, next week is grades one through five. So if we keep rolling, but it's going to take everybody with a level of commitment, I think, to really keep everyone safe. Because you want the teachers to be safe, we want the kids to be safe. We want the, you know, parents at home. There's, you know, people at home that have, you know, health concerns, them to be safe. And it's, you know, it's going to take a lot to do this. But I appreciate you continuing to move forward and just thank you for that on behalf of kids. Because the thought of kids not stepping in a building for months is, I mean, I don't know. I can't really wrap my head around that. So, all right. Karen?
I have several pieces. Just as we looked at roll, it's kind of a rolling start or rolling open. Is it, is it possible and are we looking, like we keep saying, six through 12? Is it possible to do certain grades, certain buildings at these levels? So, you know, we said EC is five days a week. That started last week. Now we did kindergarten hybrid, starting today, and that's where they will be. You just indicated tonight that it'll be hybrid. But can we look at a rolling open or specific buildings versus chunks?
Yes, we've, we've, we've asked our people to look at various options. And, and one of the, the ideas would be some type of a, a rollout that, that is similar to what we've done at the elementary, so possibly sixth and ninth graders. Or also the consideration of do we staff the buildings that, that we can staff at any given time? And that could mean that different schools are in or out in different weeks depending on. on if we can, if we can bring the kids in. Is, is that better than all or nothing? So these are all things that, that we're looking at and that we've asked people to consider.
And I know that there was a community assistance commitment. And Luke, you had talked a little bit about it, I think, the linkage, is that we want to make sure that people are highly qualified, that have a good match, I think that you said, the terms that you used. But are we still pursuing community assistance and that commitment?
Yes, any, any lists of community members who stated that they were willing to help, we've explained to them the process if they wanted to become a certified substitute teacher, that they have to go online to the Elmhurst site via the AppleTrack system and apply to be a substitute teacher. But first and foremost though, they need to contact the Illinois State Board of Education and apply for their substitute teaching license, which either involves somebody who has 60 college hours for, where they can be a sub four days a week, not, they can't do it five days a week. If somebody has a bachelor's degree or higher, they automatically qualify for a sub license. They just have to apply, send in transcripts, pay their fee. But then it's just a waiting game with ISB of when the turnaround is. But I heard that it's not terribly long, but it could potentially be anywhere from three to six weeks though for that whole turnaround time for them to be, become a certified substitute teacher. So if they just keep following that process and apply to ISB immediately, apply online for our substitute, through our substitute application process, we will process people immediately once they come in.
As far as some of the other things go, I've encouraged the PTAs to work through their local schools to determine needs. So if they need some support with preserving social distancing, supervising snack breaks, those types of things, we're trying to leave that at, at a local level because it's easier to manage that way and some of the needs are different.
Thanks for adding that piece. And then the last question I have is about, probably to you, Scott, maybe Kevin, is, give us a sense of, I know that we want to be in person, I know that we want to be at least hybrid, but at the six through 12 level, there are labs and there's hands-on things. How do we accommodate that in remote and make sure that the kids are getting the education standards that we expect?
So the teachers are being very creative. To go back on the kindergarten example, I know you mentioned six, 12, but the kindergarten teacher had a monitor, maybe two monitors, an iPad, a microphone, the board setup, and had, it was, it was very gadget-rich. And it was impressive to watch. And I know that the high schoolers are doing the same thing. We are looking into some additional technologies and some really creative and frankly cool ways to, to sort of follow a teacher around in a classroom. That won't be, you know, potentially a fix-all, but it is going to be an opportunity for us to make sure that labs are maximized. There's been some video footage at the middle school level around some of the industrial tech work that's going on and some of the really cool, creative ways that teachers are sort of video recording themselves doing things and having colleagues help. So there's, there's been some sort of like amateur filmmaking that's come out of this and some really like fun creativity. No doubt the same as being in person. So it's no way a supplement, or I should say no way a replacement, but, but definitely a supplement. So the teachers are really trying to figure that out and trying to make sure they do it in a way that stays engaging and doesn't, you know, lose the, the content and the skills piece of it.
And thank you for sharing that because I hope that it's not all or nothing. And, and, and that's then the kids lose out on the educational experience. Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, all right.
So I'll just close this portion out by just thanking the Park District for its work. We've been working together with them over the course of the last several weeks to try to come up with some type of a plan to help at least partially mitigate some of the childcare concerns that some of our families are experiencing. And there's a program called Club Ed that we're going to be partnering with them on to, to try to work together with some of our facility utilization, which is kind of, it's, it's, it's not like the former rec station, there are different components to it. But, but we are, are building on that partnership with them to try to see what we can do basically related to, to the statement I made earlier that we expect this to, to be our, our reality for a period of time here. And we know that, that that is causing a lot of stress on some of our families and we hope that this can help at least a little bit. So that's, that's, that's it for that item then, I think.
All right, thanks. Okay, superintendent's consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull an item? Okay, then could I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that the board approves the consent agenda items, A, personnel report, and B, speech, language, pathology, purchase services contract agreement.
A second?
Okay. Motion by Beth, second by Margaret. You can call the vote.
Wait, Kara, I'm sorry, can I just ask one question about, or I can't, no, okay.
Well. Yeah.
I waited for the question.
Let's consent.
I just wanted some clarification. On the pathology purchases, that contract, I noticed on the contract, it just indicated Conrad Fisher. Is it the contract for just Conrad Fisher? Or is it for anywhere in the district that requires the services?
So there's a specific posit, sorry.
Sorry.
Didn't mean to scare you. There's a specific position that was open there that we were trying to fill right now.
All right. You can call the vote.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Trautman?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, seven i's, no n's, motion passes. All right, next is superintendent's agenda action items, technology purchase. Dave, if you want to give the background?
Yes, so as we first started on this journey, we were hoping that we would be able to find a way to staff the, the buildings in which we would have some people that were exclusively remote teachers and some people that were doing the in-person components. And for a variety of reasons, that was something that we did not believe that we were going to be able to support. So we had to try to figure out how to staff in a, in a manner that would be able to support the, you know, both modalities. And in order to do that, our instructional coaches, some of our teachers from our tech committee, some of the meetings that we've had with, with our cabinet members and directors and building principals, some of our building principals who were on the tech committee and are a little bit more leaders in that area, were offering, all of these groups together were offering a lot of their input on the various different ways that, to make this work. And so they came forward to me and, and I will tell you, because of the associated price take, I, I did press back pretty hard. And they, they convinced me that if, if we're going to ask our teachers to do this, that it's going to be next to impossible for them to pull this off without increased resources. And so for the specifics of the resources, I would defer to RJ, Scott and Nikki. But I am supportive of the fact that we, that, that in, in this recommendation that we move forward and authorize this.
Okay. I'll go ahead and ask for a motion and then we can ask questions or get more information. Can I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of additional technology items as outlined in the proposal not to exceed a total of $290,000.
I'll second.
All right, a motion by Courtney and second by Beth. Any questions or, you know, information you'd like elaborated?
Yeah, just, I would appreciate just a little bit more detail. You know, it sounds like this is very important to our teachers. And so I'd like to understand a bit more why, why they think it will help them accomplish what they're tasked with.
So in communicating to multiple different teacher groups, as Dr. Moyer mentioned, one of the things that really surfaced is the desire from a, from an instructional perspective to support the learning in the classroom always. But especially in this new environment where we have multiple different environments to support, some of our opportunities really kind of surfaced in the sense of what needs do the classrooms have? Specifically, one of the things that came up was audio needs. Another need that came up was, was visual needs, so cameras. Another need that came up was the teacher's ability to be flexible in their, in their learning and teaching. So the ability to support different learning needs in the classroom, but as well as they connected to the virtual space and do it in a way with fidelity to really make sure that our students are learning. From those, those goals or from those expectations, a number of different ideas kind of surfaced. It was, you know, should we look at web cameras to support the, the camera needs? Should we look at additional microphones, classroom microphones or individual student microphones to support the audio need? And, you know, different other accessory resources like tablet stands? Should we, should we get stands to support different camera needs or different, you know, whatever the purposes are? From that conversation and through the, the more that we, we looked at it, the more that we reviewed the, the needs, it, it came, became clear pretty quick that there was options out there that would allow us to make a single purchase that would fill multiple needs across the, the classroom, whether that was learning and teaching or just space issues or whatever it was. And from collaboration, from the input that we received, it became clear that a secondary teaching device would be our best opportunity to, to, to fill the needs across multiple classrooms, multiple schools, multiple grade levels. So that's why we came forward with the proposal as, as it is.
And is this, is this a, are there other outstanding technology items that, that our staff feels like they need also? Or is this, this is sort of the main item that, that is being asked of us?
As a, as a primary item, this will fill a number of different needs that have surfaced, whether it be camera, whether it be audio, whether it be doc sta, doc stands, whatever the needs have surfaced, this secondary teaching device and whatever accessories that are there to support it would create a new teaching and learning environment, whether it be in person or virtual. This, these resources that we suggested would, would significantly help our teachers create the learning environment for our kids, that they hope to.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, as I've commented on in the past, I do have concerns about costs and just being respectful of our taxpayers during these times because they're, you know, they're experiencing challenges in this economic environment and I think higher costs for, for educating their kids. But I do, I do think we have a balance sheet to absorb this cost and I know it's important to our teachers, so I, I will support it for them. Thank you.
Anybody else? I just wanted to say I like hearing that it's come from, here's where we're at, here's what we need, and it's coming through the teachers. And so that, that makes it easy to support. So thanks. All right, any, oh, yeah, Margaret.
Thank you for pulling this information together. And I, I recognize the importance of, of making sure we have the equipment and supplies. I, I'm going to make this continued ask to also examine the support, the technical staff that we have available to make sure we have significant people that can assist us with the questions that come up. So just making that, I know you're working on that, I appreciate that, but just want to make sure we keep that in the forefront, that we also look at the resources of people available.
Karen?
And, and so with that, I mean, the, the real issue is we're doubling devices and we're not talking about adding any tech support staff from that standpoint. So just so that people understand the context of, you know, what, what we're looking at and what RJ is looking at with his team. But we're looking at it from several different standpoints, right? It's the technology itself and it's the instructional use of the technology in the classroom. And so that's just, I'm going to make a statement and then can you validate whether this is true? This is what you referenced, RJ, when you were doing the presentation is, that's why you and Scott or Dr. Grinns and Mrs. Tamaru are working together to make sure that as we deploy more technology, that the, all the teaching staff understand how to utilize it, not just some of them. And that, that is, you're looking at the process, you're looking at how you would deploy it, how you train people, you know, what the instructional coaches, you know, support, et cetera. So that's kind of how I'm envisioning it, from how we deploy it, how we support it, and then how you are looking at, do we have sufficient staff to make sure that we are supporting the classroom teachers in this new environment and technology?
That's accurate, Karen.
Anything else? All right, you can call the vote.
Mrs. Trautman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, seven i's, no n's, a motion passes. All right, next item on superintendent's agenda action items is a consideration of real estate sale and purchase agreement at 253 North Emory Avenue in Elmhurst. Dave or Chris?
Yeah, well, if we have questions, we can turn it over to Chris. But this property is immediately adjacent, and you see the picture up there, immediately adjacent to Field School. And you can see that it squares off that, that piece of property. And what we think will do will, will help with our, that, that extra piece of land will help with our construction designs that are in process right now. And it would, to, to us, it certainly makes sense that, that, that piece of property is, is a, a perfect fit to add to that lot at Field. And not only does it, does it square off the property, but if you see where that parking lot is and you start thinking about even giving our architects a little bit more square footage for options to figure out traffic or to figure out how far to recess certain things or whatever is, is something that is going to be beneficial to them. So Chris, if you have anything else to say by way of introduction, but we are recommending that you approve the motion to purchase this property. And I believe the purchase price, Chris, I can't see it right now. $270.
$270.
All right, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion and then.
I move that the Board of Education approve and authorize the Board President to execute the real estate and purchase agreement for the school district's purchase of 253 North Emroy Avenue in Elmhurst. And further authorize the Board President, Secretary, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, official and Board Attorney to execute all necessary document to effectuate the transfer of the property to the school district.
I'll second.
Questions? Yeah, questions, discussion? Anybody?
You know, a couple of things I, I would point out here that, you know, first of all, the school district does not buy or sell property very often. You know, this is a situation where we're not, we're not using our, our authority of eminent domain. We negotiated with the seller. We're buying it for about $10,000 under what the seller listed, listed it for. And that, if I remember.
And if I remember, Field School has about 400 students in it. And if I remember correctly from past years, the State of Illinois recommends that a 400 kid elementary school be situated on about 10 acres of land. Field School is situated on four and a half acres of land, not nearly what the state recommends. So, you know, I think this is a good purchase in that it makes the lot square. It, as Dr. Moyer pointed out, it gives our architects, especially at this time when we're figuring out a new building to put on that site, a little more flexibility. And, you know, it's a big help. It's a little piece of property that is a big help on that side. So I think it's a good purchase by the school district.
And it went on the market just in the last month, so it was, you know, FYI. And any other questions? Okay, call the vote.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Trautman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, seven ayes, no nays, a motion passes. All right, superintendent's communication, Inspira Awards.
Yeah, so I just wanted to recognize our communications department. It has a solid reputation and continues to do good work. And this year was awarded or is awarded six Inspira Awards. That's their professional organization. It's a national organization. The I here stands for the Illinois Chapter. And our people are being recognized for a variety of different types of publications, features or other types of productions, video in some cases. York Distinguished Alumni Program, Inquiry-Based Learning, Elmhurst CUSD 205 First Day of School 2019-20, District 205 Teacher Jen Lieben nominated for Illinois Teacher of the Year and District 205 Foundation and District 205 Annual Report. So I just wanted to take a chance to share some good news and thank our people for their hard work. The other item that I have on here is an update.
Thank you, Bev and Jenna and Kate, who is probably not watching but might be. So thank you. I know you've been working a lot and those were great pieces on top of everything else. So thank you.
Okay, nope, that's fine. The other thing that I just wanted to report out is the start of the school year, conversations are obviously dominating for good reason, our discussions, but other work continues to go on. And the, believe it or not, the work for the Lincoln Construction Project is accelerating rapidly and pretty soon, before we all know it, there's going to be groundbreaking going on in that part of town. So I just want to give you an update. The architect shared with us the, some initial interior concepts that we expect to bring to the Board on October 13th for public viewing. And they were in their kind of conceptual form, but some of their ideas are really nice and I look forward, do you have any opportunity to see that? I think you'll get very excited. There's a lot involved in making this happen. And so we had an initial planning meeting. We have five subcommittees. We have several, several of our administrators are chairing those committees. So I outlined that for you just to kind of give you a flavor of how we're organizing this. We talked about it before, but it's been a while. So I wanted to just kind of bring that out and reshare and make sure that you were aware that these are some of the types of things that are currently going on. So there is a logistics planning committee. So just to give you an example, we actually, in order to get the stuff moved out of Lincoln, we have to know all of our staffing, where everybody's going in time, not only to meet our statutory deadline for any staffing things that we need to do in March and our notification deadline that we have in our contract for the spring, but our facilities people will actually start boxing up different things and getting them out of that building over spring break in March. And so, you know, a lot of this planning, they can't start boxing stuff up until we can tell them where to bring it. So there's a lot of, a lot that goes into this. That's just one example. But so some of these things are isolated, portions of the project that don't necessarily reach into other areas. And then some other portions of this are interrelated. So some of the work is going to be coordinated. But we have the Transportation Committee. The majority of the Lincoln students will qualify for busing and will need to get that worked out. The Instructional Planning Committee will have to do with the different things that are related to, how are they going to create building schedules? How are they going to get various different things coordinated with even starting the spring with how are they, making class lists, starting to get professional learning communities operating together in the spring about the school improvement planning process once we know where teachers are going? A lot of those types of things are going to be involved with those conversations. The Staffing Committee and then a Culture and Communities Committee that is going to talk about everything from the internal work that they would need to possibly do to get their teachers working together effectively, to some of the community pieces about how do the PTAs merge for a year? How do we make sure that the local neighborhood communities are informed of construction timelines or other important events? So this is, this is just, the first planning meeting occurred on the 26th and the subcommittees are beginning to meet and do their work. And then we are going to reconvene on September 23rd with the Steering Committee to review the work that has been going on this past month. And the other document that I included is from the architects where they share with you the timelines for the Lincoln design schedule. And as you can see, we're in the process of beginning to construct bid packages. Some of this, I think, is going to be discussed on Wednesday, tomorrow night, correct? But generally speaking, we're on time and on budget and we're looking good with where we're at, with some details to be sort of hanging out there yet that we need to work through. But this just gives you an idea of what we're doing leading up to approving the bids. And then we'll extend that out with the actual schedule for beginning the site prep work and the demo work and all those things that are going to begin starting this spring, depending somewhat on the weather and perhaps a couple other variables. So I wanted to give you an update on that. And unless there's something that you would like me to clarify, that's all I have for you.
All right, so Tweet of the Week.
Thank you to the Board and also thank you to our community for being so supportive as we begin to bring back our students. And I've said this on numerous occasions and I will say it again, I am the proud eldest sibling of a student or former student who had, has disabilities. And to see what our students have access to here is amazing and that we can bring them back under these kinds of conditions to help support them even further is wonderful. So what you see before you is a teacher at the high school who is getting ready and preparing some remote learning kits, Dr. Patricia Rowe. And she is making sure that they can just get things going back and forth between the classroom, keep them together and home, making sure that that transition between what they can do in class and what they have to do at home is cared for. And that just doesn't happen automatically. Someone has to intentionally plan that. So you can see that she's tagged a number of people, including administrations, current and former, because she was so proud of what she was doing. But special, special thanks to her and a huge Tweet of the Week to Dr. Patricia Rowe and all the team at York and all of our teams across the district and at Admin. It has really been a labor of love to see the students come back at the rate that they are and what we expect to see in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Bev. Okay, Board Communications. Does anybody have a report or information they want to share with the Board? Okay, then we have three upcoming meetings scheduled. Tomorrow night, September 9th, 2020 is a Finance and Operations Committee here at 5:30. September 22nd, 2020 is a regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting here at 7 o'clock. And October 13th, 2020 is a regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7 o'clock. If there is nothing else, then we are adjourned. Thank you.